We'll call this meeting the order of the Planning Commission Thursday, August 15th. There's multiple ways to participate, but to start off, please join us in a flag salute.
Ladies and gentlemen, of the United States of America, to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Can we get a roll call of Commissioners present, please?
Ivor Scavdall. Commissioner Noah Levy.
Here.
Commissioner Thomas Mulder.
Here.
Commissioner Peggy O'Neil.
Here.
Commissioner Sarah West.
Here.
Commissioner Jerome Curriozzi.
Here.
Commissioner Lorna McFarland.
Here.
So we got a quorum. Director, do we have any agenda modifications?
We have no modifications to the agenda. There are two late submittals on the dais here. One is for the Gardner subdivision map. The other is for the commercial residential zoning ordinance change.
Thank you for that. So now we will open it up for public comment on non-agenda items. Is there anyone in the public that would like to speak on non-agenda items? Seeing nobody moving towards the podium in person, we'll close public comment in person and move to Zoom or on the phone. Anyone raising their hand for public comment? I am seeing none, so I will close public comment. And we will move to consent agenda. Any members of the commission want to pull anything from the one item, I guess I would say, from consent? Seeing no. Any hands from members of the public that would like to pull that item? Seeing none. I would ask for a motion for consent then.
I move approval of the consent calendar.
Anyone got a second?
I'll second.
Okay. We got a first and a second. Let's go with the voice vote. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Anyone oppose? No abstain? Anyone abstain? And one absent. Motion carries. So public hearings, heavenly rooted estate project withdrawn. Do we have to open a hearing or?
Nope.
Okay. That's just?
It's just a notification that that's gone. We did a public notice for it, so people may be tempted to show up. So we put it on the agenda so that people would know that it's been withdrawn.
Okay. That's, thank you for that clarification. So then we would move on to draft commercial residential ordinances. And just for clarification, as we've done the previous ordinances, are we going to have staff walk all the way through it and then take public comment and then piece by piece?
Yeah, I would recommend that.
Okay.
We'll give a presentation and then we'll walk through what's been presented. You've seen this in a workshop before.
Yes.
But there are some things we've added. So we'll walk through all that. There are some decision points, as you've seen in the packet.
Yes. Okay, thank you for that. So if everyone could just please write down their questions so that way staff can present through and then we'll circle back to that. Thank you. So turning it over to staff.
Good evening, Commissioners. My name is Riann Megan and I will be presenting the commercial residential and zoning update ordinances. Sorry about that. So first we will be presenting the commercial residential ordinance. The commercial residential ordinance will allow for dwellings or the combination of dwellings and commercial uses in both commercial and industrial zonings. We are proposing to do all commercial zonings and business park for industrial. We held a web workshop at the April 18th Planning Commission meeting and this was continued from the previous July 18th Planning Commission hearing. This is in response to Senate Bill 6, the Middle Class Housing Act of 2022, which deems a housing development project as allowable use within a zone where office, retail, or parking are principally permitted. We went over this at the workshop. However, there are some new Commissioners since that workshop. So SB 6, the eligible zonings will be C1, C2, C3, CH, business park, limited industrial, and heavy industrial. From the inland zonings, we are proposing to not include limited industrial or heavy industrial to preserve our industrial zoning lands. We are removing the requirement to have a skilled and trained workforce pay the prevailing wage in order to allow for more flexibility in development. The project site must be 20 acres or less in area. We are also proposing to remove that requirement and agree to remove that requirement at the workshop. So the first change from the workshop was we discussed maximum density of 16 dwelling units per acre based on the mixed-use land use general plan. However, we are now proposing a maximum of 30 dwelling units per acre to be consistent with the tiny house village ordinance and are proposing a minimum of 15 dwelling units per acre for vacant lots. And that is in relation to SB 6 where Humboldt County would be defined as a micro metropolitan area and the minimum would be 15 dwelling units per acre. The project cannot be located on a site or adjoining any site where one-third of the square footage is dedicated to industrial use. We are keeping this requirement to preserve our industrial lands. The project must provide notice to commercial tenants and relocation assistance to qualifying independently owned commercial tenants. We are proposing to have the conversion of existing commercial space into residential space cannot result in eviction of existing businesses to maintain our existing commercial. And finally, we are keeping the requirement to have development beyond a legal parcel, but are removing the urban cluster requirement, which we discussed at the workshop. For density, we are proposing, in the staff report, it was 20 dwelling units and that was due to, at the time, the tiny house village was 20 dwelling units per acre. However, at the last hearing, it was determined by the commission to go up to 30 dwelling units per acre. So we are proposing the alternative of maximum of 30 dwelling units per acre to be consistent with that ordinance. And density bonus would also be updated to reflect that. So instead of a maximum of 16, it would be 30. However, we could also keep it as 20 or 16, which will be a point to discuss with the commission. The proposed minimum density of 15 dwelling units per acre for vacant lots is to maintain the commercial standing of vacant lots and prevent the conversion of a vacant commercial lot into a single-family residence, which would not promote that much infill or get us that many units. And that is due to, inspired by the SB 6 requirement, to have the minimum of 15 dwelling units per acre. We are proposing no short-term rentals to be consistent with Senate Bill 6. The public comments we have received are to keep the urban cluster requirement, which I will discuss further on a later slide. And we received a recent public comment regarding parking, so I will also discuss that as well. We have not changed the parking requirements or the urban cluster requirements since the workshop. Currently, these are the urban clusters within Humboldt County. You can see it surrounds the greater Humboldt Bay Area region with the inclusion of Rio Del and Scotia. If we remove the urban cluster requirement, these following parcels will also be eligible for the commercial residential ordinance, which would be Willow Creek, Oric, South Humboldt, Weah, Red Press, Myers Flat, Miranda, Phillipsville, Redway, Garberville, and Shelter Cove. And then coastal will be Oric, Trinidad, Samoa, Shelter Cove, Alita, and Ferndale. For parking, no changes have been made since the workshop. However, there was a concern about parking minimums brought up by the general public. And we could discuss this more if the commission has any questions. Otherwise, we can move on to going through the ordinance. Okay. This is the inland version of the commercial residential ordinance. I'm going to continue scrolling through the ordinance. Please let me know if you'd like me to stop so we can discuss certain points of the draft. So alternative one is going to be either proposing the 20 dwelling units per acre, which was the previous tiny house village maximum, or to be consistent with the recently Planning Commission-approved tiny house village ordinance, the maximum shall be 30 dwelling units per acre. And if the residential use is proposed on a vacant lot, there shall be a minimum residential density of 15 dwelling units per acre.
You have a brief question here, Commissioner Curriozzi.
I guess a little confused on where we are in our process. Are we in the questions point? And then we'll go to public comment and then we'll go back to discussion?
We're at a point right now where we're just simply walking through the ordinance. Then we'll take public comment. Or you can ask clarifying questions when she's done here. Then we'll go to public comment and then we'll come back for questions and deliberation.
Thank you.
Alternative two is to be consistent with the densities. So if we are going to change the density to be a maximum of 30 dwelling units, we are recommending that the density bonus shall be consistent with a maximum of 30 dwelling units.
Already explained the parking, but why don't you just give a brief summary of what each of these paragraphs are so that not only the commission, but people who may be watching from home can see what's being anticipated?
So with parking, we are proposing, with the approval of an administrative permit, a commercial residential project may reduce the required vehicle parking by up to 50% of the spaces for residential use. And off-street parking shall be for one mixed-use, provided parking facilities for proposed uses are within the same development site. We are not proposing a change in residential, how we calculate the minimum requirements for residential parking. So it would be consistent with a different section of the code. However, with the administrative permit, they would be able to reduce that minimum. And I do have those on the slideshow if the commission would like me to pull those up on what the residential for one family, two family, and multiple dwellings would be.
Commissioner Curriozzi has a question there.
Through the chair, I have a couple of questions, clarifying questions. The first, in the very first sentence of the parking section, can you clarify what an administrative permit is?
Administrative permit is something that was recently added to the code as part of the short-term rental ordinance. And that is a permit that is approved, just like it sounds administratively, which means it's approved without any public hearing or notice or anything like that. It's a staff-level decision.
And is that a separate permit that would be applied for in addition to the project as a whole?
Yes. Oftentimes, there are multiple permits on projects.
And then one last question. Can you, it says, maybe proposed, I mean, reducing the parking may be proposed when the demand for parking spaces does not result in conflicts. And could you elaborate potentially what conflicts might mean?
Sure. We still live in a environment where there are demands to be able to use personal vehicles. And so one of the struggles we get into is that if we reduce the parking too much, oftentimes that disperses parking onto the streets and that could create circulation conflicts. It could create conflicts with the neighbors. It could create a number of different things. So it just reserves the ability to really look at the situation and see if that's something that has the potential to affect the neighborhood character, affect the circulation.
To clarify, that, it's up to the discretion of the director.
Yes.
Thank you.
Can I piggyback on the administrative? Just to clarify, from my understanding of the last ordinances we've done, then basically the commission sets a bunch of boxes with staff's direction. And as long as everything checks all the boxes, that's when the administrative permit happens. That's correct.
That is how the short-term rental ordinance is structured. And it's an interesting run-through the first time as we're going through that because oftentimes, things are not that easy.
Yes, I would agree with you.
So, exceptions to the parking standards, we are proposing that parking standards for new residential units, the minimum can be reduced if it is within half-mile walking distance of public transit, consists entirely of affordable housing units with covenants and restrictions ensuring long-term affordability. For existing commercial use, the conversion of existing commercial space into residential space shall not result in eviction of any businesses except for housing developments allowed by right pursuant to government code and shall comply with, and this part of the code is Senate Bill 6. There are pathways that if they do want to evict a business or have a commercial use leave, they could follow the Senate Bill 6 code and there would be a whole process outlined by Senate Bill 6. However, we are not proposing that because there'd be relocation assistance. So we are proposing no conversion of existing commercial space. But there is an option for the public that if they did want to change that, they could. They would just have to go through the Senate Bill 6. Then, to be consistent with Senate Bill 6, no short-term rental shall be allowed.
Can you pause for one second? There's a clarifying question right here.
Just a clarifying question on the half-mile walking distance. That's like on a map, half-mile. It's not like confirmed that there's sidewalks or there's no criteria that it is what walkable means, right?
So it could probably be clarified to also put in there that there is a clear path of travel.
Moving on to definitions, we are defining commercial residential to be a development that is either consists of dwellings or a mixture of dwellings and commercial uses in accordance to the previous section we just discussed. Section four is updating the use types to allow commercial residential as a use. Section five is updating the related zoning tables to reflect the addition of commercial residential. And these will all be principally permitted. Commercial residential will be principally permitted in all these zones. So C1 is neighborhood commercial. C2 will be community commercial. C3 is industrial commercial. And MB will be business park. And highway service commercial is CH. And business park will be the only industrial zone that principally permits commercial residential. And that would conclude the draft of the inland version of the commercial residential ordinance.
Chair, if we could, we also have some other sections of ordinance to present. It's the second ordinance. But I would recommend that we finish with this one and then move to that one.
Okay, because I had a couple of questions.
I just had a quick clarifying question about, is flood risk assessment done any differently currently under code for residential versus commercial? So what I'm getting at is, are we going to be encouraging housing in, you know, increasingly flood-prone areas that wouldn't otherwise be if it was residential?
No, not at all.
Perfect. Thanks.
Are there any other clarifying? Commissioner O'Neil?
Are we going to talk about the parking or is this the time?
We would go, just make sure if we're doing anything, we stick to just clarifying questions till we get public comments so that way we don't potentially deter anyone. Questions are fine, just don't lean towards opinions, I guess, the way I've been coached.
Okay. I won't have any opinions. So, when you decide on the number of parking spaces that are allowed, is there a percentage of those that are ADA?
Yes, and that comes out of the building code.
So if you had 30 units and you were going to do the 50%, which are the 15, then what number of ADA units would?
So the number of parking spaces would, the number of ADA spaces would be modified based upon the number of spaces that are being provided.
So would they be in addition to?
No, they're part of the parking requirement.
So if you had 15 spots, then maybe three of them might be in, or whatever.
Probably one or two.
Okay. So I'll save my opinion for later then.
Any other? Okay. So just to clarify, Director, you wanted to walk through the coastal part two and then take?
I think the coastal part is similar enough. We have some other changes.
Okay.
It's a different ordinance, so we've got four ordinances for you tonight.
Okay.
We've got the commercial residential inland and coastal. The concepts are basically the same. Then we've got some other ordinance cleanups. That's a separate set of ordinances, inland and coastal. What I would think would be the most expedient is really focus on this right now.
Okay.
And get through this first. And then if you want to go through the coastal, we can. But it's going to be the same thing, similar to what we just did with tiny home village. And then go to the other ordinance, go through that in the same, following the same process.
I like that better. And I do agree, the coastal, I think, was almost identical. So right now would be the appropriate time to open up public comment, correct? Okay, so now I would open up for public comment on the commercial, draft commercial residential ordinance to those in person, which I'm not seeing anyone actually when I look up. So then I would go to anyone on the phone or Zoom. Please raise your hand if you want to speak. Seeing no hands up, so I'll close public comment on this portion and bring you back to the commission.
Chair, moment of privilege. One of the people that's on the Zoom has submitted a letter on the item that was approved on consent. And I'm just wondering if she knows that.
I will clarify that anything that was on the consent calendar was approved. So the opportunity to speak on the consent has since passed. For anyone that's following and potentially wanting to comment on that, that was passed during the consent calendar where ample opportunity was given for people to comment. So.
And if we could just clarify, that, that covers the Gardner parcel map subdivision.
Correct.
Yeah.
Thank you for that. So, draft commercial residential ordinance, Commissioner O'Neil, I would turn to you now you would give a little bit of opinion.
I have a real-time experience with all this parking and garbage. And I can see clearly how it's a problem if you have 30 units with 15 spaces. Unless they're assigned spaces and the people know that, you know, 15 of you don't get a car and the other 15 are assigned and it comes with their lease or whatever. But the other problem is the garbage pickup because when you have less parking than you need, then on garbage day, it's really a nightmare because, you know, you can't even get to the trash cans because the cars are parked everywhere and they're parked all down the road. Because in reality, you know, it's, most people have a car and in some cases, there's two cars per unit. And so if you already start out with half the vehicles you need for one car, and I'm not promoting cars. I'm not, and it'd be nice if everybody walked, but they don't. And they don't walk in the rain and the cold and what have you. So I think that that's a really serious concern unless you go into the units knowing that you don't have a parking space and that those that are there are assigned. If not, people are parking on the sidewalk, they're parking on all of the roads coming into it. And, you know, I don't know about 1 ADA space for 30 units. That's, you know, and then you have visitors that come. There's no place to park for them and it just becomes a nightmare. So it's going to happen. So you need to plan for it, I think, if you want to do good planning. Or you rent these units out knowing that these are non-vehicle units and there's assigned parking for everybody that does have a unit that's leased with a vehicle's parking space. But I don't know if you can go that far and write an ordinance that tells people you can't have a car. So you're just creating a problem. And the trash thing is real. Like I went over to this units that we built, there was 36 of them in Arcata, to take some nice pictures. It was trash day. And it was like, there was, you couldn't even get to the trash cans because it was parked, cars parked all over. They're parking on the sidewalk because, you know, that's the only place they could. So it is going to be a problem. And then it just creates a lot of frustration for people in the community, people that live there. I don't know what the answer is, but I don't think that we should just ignore it.
Thank you. Commissioner Levy?
Yeah, well, I mean, with all, with all due respect to Commissioner O'Neil, I'm not, I'm not much less convinced that parking minimums do serve a purpose or at least that they couldn't be reduced further. And, you know, I, let's see, I know that as written, it has an exception for projects which are within a half-mile of public transit and which are above the threshold of affordability requirements. I certainly don't want to reduce, I'm very wary of taking anything away that might incentivize doing a more affordable development. But I guess my feeling is that, you know, for projects which are within a half-mile of public transit, I might be sympathetic to eliminating the parking requirement or reducing it further. So I guess my question is, do we even have leeway under other relevant codes or other state laws to do that, to reduce the parking requirements even further than what is proposed here? And if that's true, then I would be curious if any other Commissioners are open to that. Oh, and one last thing that just occurs to me that's relevant to parking. Director Ford, I know you just sent us yesterday or today the draft of the county's climate action plan, which I admit I have not actually had a chance to look at yet. But since this question of parking requirements often gets brought up in the context of achieving climate goals, I was just curious if you or the other staff happens to recall, does that? Does that say anything about changing our standards with regard to parking? Do, does that say anything about changing our standards with regard to parking requirements?
Not so much attacking the parking requirements, to the chair. It is trying to create alternatives to needing to drive a personal vehicle, really to focus on reducing vehicle miles traveled. One of the things that, there's a lot to unpack when it comes to transportation in Humboldt County. Because, it may be that people still want to have cars, but it may be that they would also ride public transit where it's available. And, and so, part of the thing that we're struggling with here is whether or not you're looking to make, do something, we talk about a lot in the planning and building department, which is revolutionary change or evolutionary change. And, you know, to just completely cut off parking without having the other resources in place for people to have that alternative is certainly revolutionary, but does it meet the development needs of this community as we transition away from a reliance on the automobile? And, and so, I think the commission really should struggle with, you know, what's the ultimate vision of what Humboldt County looks like, how it functions, and, and then is, are there interim steps along the way to get there?
I, I really take that point, but I just would add one more quick follow-up, which is that, to be clear, I don't think any of us are proposing that we prohibit parking. It's more just, do we want to allow the discretion for a developer who chooses to propose something without parking to do so? You know, not to say there couldn't be parking, but, you know, as, as it stands, we would still be requiring a minimum level of parking to go with every project, and that's where I'm just wondering if, if, if we might consider leaving that open to a project that doesn't propose that level of parking, so.
I'm going to jump in here, parking, so, I'm just going to remind us that we're doing a commercial residential ordinance. So it'd be really, with the economy we have in Humboldt County, I think it'd be really detrimental to the other businesses if we all of a sudden, right out the gate, drop all the parking requirements, and then the neighboring resident, or commercial businesses can't operate because there's no parking. So I think it'd be mindful, and I'm, I'm reading this, and maybe I'm reading it wrong, the 56.5, .3, .3, .1 exceptions to parking standards, where, if I'm reading this right, if it's all affordable housing, there's the opportunity for getting that goal, that long-term goal of no parking requirements in that instance, where we're also checking the box of affordable housing, because I think we need to be checking not just the housing box, but also affordable housing, and maybe a couple others, if, if we're trying to drop that parking requirement. So I just, I want to be mindful of that. So. Commissioner O'Neil?
I agree with you on that. If you, if you're renting low-income units and people are, you know, have $1,200 a month, they probably can't afford a car and insurance also, so that may not be an issue. But if they're not low-income units, and you've got to pay $1,500 a month or $2,000 a month to live there, then you need a vehicle, because all of us here drove to work, or to the meeting, probably in a vehicle tonight. So, if you don't have safe walkways or bicycle trails, and Humboldt County's a long way from that, and even McKinleville, and like, if you were out in the commercial area over on Jacobs, you know, and you had to walk to Eureka for your job, if, if those factors aren't in place, then you're just creating hazards, you know, to people. If it's low-income, you know, and they're seniors or whatever, and, you know, they may not have a vehicle, and then it's appropriate to, to cut back on the parking, but I think that that has to be built into how, maybe that's the special permit considerations that, you know, you can factor in, because it is a low-income senior unit, and you don't need all of that. You may need more disabled parking units and something like that.
Commissioner West?
I'm not supportive of adding additional parking requirements to include more spaces. I, I can accept how it is written, however, I would also be supportive of exploring, removing the parking minimum and letting the developer figure out whether or not they think that the site will bear, what, what the, what the site will bear for parking.
I've lived in a place where I didn't have parking. I rented a place in downtown Sacramento, and the units in the back had parking and those of us in the front didn't, and I think that was, you know, like, it's a decision you make when you're shopping for your, your housing. And so, part of me is also thinking, you know, realistically, I think if we pass this ordinance, all the commercial areas that are eligible aren't going to become residential. I, I think there's going to be, you know, we'll get some applicants, I don't think it's going to be like a mass turnover, so I, I think maybe it's okay to have some developments that have the smaller parking, you know, less parking availability, because there may be people on the market that can work with that.
Well, that's what I said earlier, if you're renting it knowing you don't have a parking spot, then that's fine.
Yes.
But if you have 30 units and 15 spaces, and you rent to 30 people that have one or two vehicles, then you're, it's just going to be a problem. So, if it, if you can restrict it, like you said, I rented a place, I knew I didn't have parking, and I didn't have a problem with that, but if you rented a place and they only had half the parking that was necessary, and everybody had a vehicle, it's a different story.
I guess, can the county restrict that? And then a follow-up question is, if in an area parking was to become a problem, could the county implement like a street permit program to combat it, or, or no?
Thank you, sorry. It would be done through the public works department. You know, it, that, yes, those things can be done. But, part of the effort here is to try to create a set of scenarios where you try to minimize the potential for that to happen. And I, I guess that's where I would just try to think about, I mean, I, I get the revolutionary idea of just not requiring parking. I just wonder how many people within the community actually don't have vehicles. And, and so, there's two things there. You're putting then a developer in a place where they're developing something that may be viewed really negatively, because they're going into a community and not putting parking in, because these are absolutely by right. And, and so, the, does that, I mean, they're allowed to go ahead, which is good, but then it's really hard to roll things back, once you find out, oops, that didn't work. I'm, I'm not risk averse, but I believe in calculated risks.
So just as a follow-up to Commissioner O'Neil's question, can the county in the zoning ordinance put that parking has to be assigned, or is?
So if we, I, I, probably we could, but then, the thing that we would be arbitrating is every time there's a disagreement between a tenant and the landlord about whether or not the assigned parking is working right, the county would be doing enforcement actions. And I, I would really ask you not to do that.
If I may, through the chair, we do have a couple of slides that give the current parking regulations that might help with your conversation, if you'd like to see those? Not related to this ordinance, but the other part of the parking ordinance? Would that be helpful?
Go ahead and put that up, please.
Okay.
Do you also, by chance, have data on what percentage of the county doesn't have a vehicle? No? Okay.
One quick pause, Commissioner Kurriazi's got a clarifying question or comments here before the parking rigs?
Yeah, I guess I was going to, just, I guess, jump in with my own thoughts during this discussion. I'm happy to do that after reviewing this, if you prefer either way, it's fine.
Choice is yours.
I think, on the, Commissioner Levy had brought up the climate action plan, and in my experience, well, I guess as Director Ford had pointed out, the climate action plan focuses on vehicle miles traveled reduction. And, and I think parking comes into play insofar is, there is pretty substantial research, at least in what I've looked into, that there is a correlation between human behavior and the choice to drive, and, and resulting in, thereby affecting VMT. There's a correlation there, and how parking, you know, basically how we choose to assign land to accommodate vehicles. So I think there, there's an indirect, as Director Ford said, there may not be specific actions on parking, but there is a correlation. And, and I guess I'd, or, go ahead.
Can I ask, is that data based in a metropolitan, like a downtown city area?
Yeah, unfortunately, the vast majority of research does focus on urban areas. There's quite a bit that looks at suburban that I've seen as well. It's pretty difficult to come by looking at rural. So, yeah, I think that should definitely be.
Yeah, that's what worries me, because the maps, those pulled up earlier, Samoa and Trinidad, you know, quite far from, from some jobs.
Possibly, although there is transit. And, and I got, I had a, maybe a proposal to throw out there, after listening to others' thoughts, was recognizing that staff had put in the administrative permit process and the director's discretion around identifying conflicts, keeping those elements in there, and, and proposing that the current vehicle parking requirements, which I think staff is about to show, which is, I think is 313-109, we could use those to define the maximums, kind of taking a similar maximum approach that we did with the tiny house village. And then I think at that point, we want to talk about what a minimum is, and I would propose that the 50% reduction is the established minimum. So I wanted to throw that out there for discussion.
Thank you. Let's go to staff, and they'll put these up on the screen there.
So the current parking requirements for a single-family residence, as an example, if you only were going to put one residence on here, you'd need a parking space for each dwelling unit that contained one bedroom or less, and you'd need two if you had more than one bedroom. So, if we were going to do a 50% reduction, they'd still need one in that case. For the multifamily dwellings, it gets a little more convoluted with the, how they calculate the parking, so, starting again, one space for each one bedroom, two for each two, and then when you go to three, and then you, you know, two and a half spaces, et cetera, so it would be a little bit more, you have more units, so you're going to have a different kind of calculation for it. But just to give you kind of an example, each unit may need two spaces anyway. So, we do have, on our next slide, some exceptions that we already have in our parking code. One of them might be very important to this discussion, because it's about variable demand. So, if you have a site that has commercial uses on it, and then you're going to put residential uses on it as well, they may not have the same peak demand for parking. As a matter of fact, they most likely will not. So if you had an office use, and then you threw a couple of residences on there, you may not even need to have additional parking in that case, because while you're at work, potentially, the people would be off at their jobs somewhere else, and they would come back after people left the space. So, we already have that in our code, it's something that we can use also in this case, so I just wanted to make sure that you understood that there is an allowance for that. The other one is exceptions by petition, which is another thing that happens through the director, the hearing officer, if there's a hearing officer, if it's a special permit or some other permit, it would be the, the director, if it was the use permit, it would be the planning commission, whoever the hearing officer is. And they look at the different factors, and they can ask for exceptions by petition. So that is also already in our parking code. So, and those are the things, the geographic location, if it's a rural center, you know, different things about the site, the proximity to urban built-up areas, which again, that's what this is. We are putting these in urban built-up areas. So, these regulations already exist. So what we were doing with the residential, or the commercial residential parking section is we were adding another layer to that, to allow for another reduction if, if needed.
Thank you, that's, that's very helpful. So, actually, just so I'm clear, that second one, the exceptions by, by petition, we, this is writing in that if you meet the affordability, affordable housing standard, you could in fact eliminate any parking requirement. Short of that, that's not the way this is written, but what I, if I understand you correctly, a developer who wished to propose, perhaps, perhaps not zero, but even less parking than what this ordinance would set as a minimum, could still seek an exception to do so with, you know, providing the evidence or the case for why this, this would not, why this would be appropriate there? They have that option at any time, is what you're saying?
Yes, they do.
Okay, thank you.
Could I, could I clarify through, through the chair, if that exception, so if, if a project is principally permitted, then, but they wanted to file a petition for an exception of parking, would that then require that project to come to the planning commissioner? Would we, would it still remain principally permitted?
It would still remain principally permitted. At this time, what happens is that petition goes to the director, and it's reviewed by the director. What we were trying to do in this ordinance was have it be a little bit more of a formal process by making it the administrative permit. It's basically the same thing. So we were just, we were just using the administrative permit that we now have in our code. And we may actually update that section of the parking ordinance at some point to have that also be an administrative permit.
Director?
Sorry, I was just going to say, some of the older sections of the code are not keeping pace with the changes we're making, and so the administrative permit really is a huge step forward in terms of providing a framework and a process. It's really good work, and as Ms. Schatz said, it is basically this process.
Commissioner Kurriazi?
Also clarifying is, when I had first read the variable demand, I guess I had assumed it meant the combined peak. So, so is that, I hear what you're saying is that's not true. It is, if, combined peak, what I mean is, you would take the peak of one and the peak of the other and sum, sum them together. That's not what this is doing, right? You're, you're looking at one day, and if residential peak is at 8:00 PM and commercial peak is at noon, whichever is highest, is that what this means?
The way that I read it is that, let's say that you have 10 spaces required for your commercial use, and 10 spaces required for your residential use, and, and the, they can give us evidence that those are not used at the same time? We might allow 10 spaces for the use. Because, why have a parking lot that, why have a 20-space parking lot that's half empty all the time? That, that's, that's how I read that? I don't know if the director has more to add to that?
I, I agree with that. I, I think, when you read about parking demand studies, the other term of art that's used here is an off-peak demand. So that you've got one peak demand, and then that determines the parking requirement, everything else doesn't have a parking requirement.
I think it makes a lot of sense if you have an existing business, and they say, well, we want to put four units upstairs, and we got plenty of parking, and it's our business, and we don't have a parking issue. But if it's next door, and you're surrounded by two commercial businesses, and you're putting 30 units, and you want to get away with only having a minimum in a number of parking, then you're just creating a problem. So, as long as you have the flexibility... So as long as you have the flexibility, I think it can work either way. But I would, and even the adjoining property owners might say, yeah, you can bleed into our property, we don't care. But I think that you're creating a problem if you're not taking that into consideration that those tenants, I mean, if I work as a nurse and I come home at midnight and there's no place to park, I'm parking in the business next door. Maybe they don't care or maybe they do. But I just don't think we should create a problem. And so it's really subjective to the project, I think.
So I just want to clarify a couple of things. So the parking that's written in this ordinance, I read that is having parity with the tiny home village that we just passed. Is that correct?
I think Commissioner Kuriozzi's proposal would be different than this.
A little bit different, but I'm just saying like the overall philosophy of getting, being able to get 50% reduction right away.
Well, that part is consistent. The other part that's not consistent is that the tiny home village set a maximum.
Yes, I understand that part. So I guess what I was, let me retrack. So the original 50%, that's parity. And then we've shown, been shown evidence by staff that people have the ability through petition to reduce that to a threshold site specifically that can, that way they can show their impacts or not impacts of overflow. So hearing everyone's concerns, like trying to balance between the commission, I feel parking would be good with these things. Am I hearing the commission right? Because the other part I see, if we get the parking dealt with, we need to look at the maximum, the density part. So that's what I'm just trying to steer us a little bit somewhere.
I'll just say, yeah, I can definitely live with this as written. But I was open to a discussion of perhaps ways to limit parking or allow for limitations on parking still further. But I also think there's sufficient flexibility as written that, and in other ordinances, that I don't, I wouldn't insist on that, you know?
I could live with this how it is, but I have a question about how the petition process works because the petition process would happen at the time of development. So you don't actually know who the residents are going to be. So you don't actually have evidence that this is or isn't going to be a problem. So I'm just, how do you analyze that? Like, I mean, if you make the assumption, oh, well, these residents will be at work, but then what if it's filled with all telecommuters? Or I just don't know how, maybe there isn't a better answer, but I'm just curious how you analyze it.
So, yeah, how have I? So one of the things you start to look at is what's the style of development? You know, what's it oriented to? Where is it? Just all the things that were listed there. And you can't plan for individuals, but you can plan for trends. And then you can adjust requirements based upon the trends that you're seeing. And that's really as close as you can get. And we do, not every day, but frequently, grant reductions in parking. Some of the most recent ones have been in some of the small lot subdivisions that have come through. And we're not seeing any undesirable effects there. I think that it's, it's hard to sit here and explain every possibility. I don't know what every possibility would be. But typically, when you're looking at these things as the facts start to unfold, it makes sense whether, how much you can reduce it, whether it is appropriate. If there's other factors that are there, like Commissioner O'Neill was mentioning, it's like, okay, are we creating an overflow or we're forcing people onto somebody else's property? And if you're doing that, maybe it's not a good idea. But if there's a little bit of, if the street's really wide and there's a good amount of opportunity for people to be parking on the street, the zoning ordinance actually also allows that.
Commissioner Kuriozzi.
I think I would still, my preference, my stance would be to propose that the, we move to a parking maximum and use the numbers in the current parking code of 313-109 to establish those maximums. Outside of that, I'm okay with how this is written currently.
Mr. West.
I'm supportive of that.
I think I would be supportive of that as well. Are you, are you saying then that the, in the commercial residential ordinance, the parking numbers that are proposed would be a max, would be stated as a maximum?
That's right.
And you could reduce by 50% by administrative permit and further or even to zero if affordable housing standards are included and proximity to transit?
Right, I think retaining those.
Yeah, okay.
I guess my thought being, I think it makes a lot of sense to provide discretion to staff and the director, looking at projects, you know, case by case, as well as the developer. But it also, as currently written, gives them the discretion to increase.
Yes.
Because they're minimums.
Okay, I mean, I do, I thank you for mentioning that again because I kind of overlooked that in my earlier comments. I think that seems like a reasonable change. If, I would be curious to hear if staff has major concerns about doing that.
I would like to pull that section up first before I made any comment. And the only thing I would like to remind us is this is commercials, zoned areas that we're talking residential, so I'm very cautious of restricting parking.
So could I clarify one thing? We would not have the ability in a ministerial permit, principally permitted use, to require more than the parking that's required. Maybe I heard you wrong, but we would be able to reduce it and then work with the applicant or builder to adjust that parking to something that fit the context. But never would we be in a position of requiring more than is allowed unless the developer wanted to do that. And what I think you're advocating is just not allowing the developer applicant to be able to provide more parking than what's stated in the ordinance normally as a minimum.
Yeah, although I guess I interpret minimum as that also provides staff the discretion to advocate for more. But certainly the developer as well.
Yeah, I would just say the staff could advocate for more and argue for more and try to, I guess, hold applicant developer hostage over that. I don't think the staff in the current planning and building department would do that because normally the ordinance requirement sets the standard.
It's going to be half or is it going to be one per unit like we looked up there?
So what I'm hearing is that basically what's written in the proposal would establish the off-street parking requirements contained in the parking provisions of the code, either 313, which is the coastal section, or 314, which is the inland. And that would then be the maximum. And then all the other abilities to reduce from there are available as contained within the proposed ordinance and also the other flexibility that the staff put up on the screen.
So was the max, the number we're starting with 50% of the number of units? Or was it one per unit?
No, well, the maximum that we're starting with is what's contained here.
Okay, that sounds reasonable. And then if they can come in and say, hey, it's my business, I have plenty of parking, I don't need any more, you know, then you can start to reduce it. Or if they say, I'm in agreement with the neighboring property that they let people park there. I just don't want to create unsafe situations where someone has to park a half a mile away because there's no parking and walk, you know, because sometimes that's not safe for some people. Or they're elderly, they can't get to their unit easily, they need to park close by. And there's all kinds of scenarios where it just doesn't work. But if there is alternatives that they can submit and say, listen, we've got it covered, then I'm all for that. But if you start out with the, we're going to just expect you to take the bus, you know, and we want, you know, that's more than I think we should be imposing on people.
Maybe I'm missing something here, but if the thought is that parking is a hindrance on development because it's expensive, then no developer in their right mind is going to want to put in an excess of parking simply because pavement is fun. And so why would we set a maximum? Like, no developer who's trying to make money would put in excessive parking? So why wouldn't we just leave that at the discretion of the developer? I don't know who this question is too, it's just a question.
If I may, through the chair, one thing did occur to me. If we set a maximum for a picture, a commercial development that has a large parking lot that already exists, and now someone wants to just transform that into residential and they have too many spaces, will we require them to take those out? So that is one concern I could see with setting a maximum. Unless that is the intent.
I would not be supportive of that, to take it out. I guess, yeah, if you had thoughts on the rationale for the maximum, otherwise I'm not seeing the purpose.
Yeah, I think the, I guess, well, it's useful to hear Director Ford say that it's unlikely that staff would recommend numbers above a minimum. But technically, a minimum means a minimum. So it allows for them to establish more. And while choosing to use land as parking spaces reduces the profitability of that project, I agree, we could just simply rely on them not choosing to do that. I am proposing that, and I agree with the commission here, we are relying on the developer to work with staff to say, here's how much parking I think we need for this project. I think that's reasonable. I just, you know, am wary of the ability to actually put in excessive parking. And that is the reason why I'm proposing maximums. And it's also, I think, we're seeing more and more cities do this, not only remove minimums, but also impose maximums and starting to take that approach of recognizing that as a public, we'd like to see our land go towards things that are more beneficial and, you know, benefit the community as a whole versus laying down asphalt.
So for me, I don't support a maximum. Very, very clear, I think it should be the developers' right to put in the amount of parking spots. But I also hear you, and I'll share, like, just a quick story from vacation I did. Development right next to a nice parking area or a nice park and community transit right, very close by, right on the other side of the street. I didn't count numbers, but it looked like they had about a 50% reduction. Well, those of us that were there visiting couldn't enjoy the park. We had to park, you know, almost a half mile away and back hike to enjoy the public resource. So my concern would be is if we don't put the requirements on the impact, site-specific impact, then we could actually be taking away the public's right to enjoy a resource because they can't utilize the public parking on the street. So that's just kind of where I'm coming from. So I'm really cautious of a maximum. So I don't know other people. It seems like, this is like a coin flip, it's like 3-3. It's kind of how I'm hearing it, but I'm not positive.
I agree with you because there's certain businesses in Eureka I don't go to because there's no parking, I just drive right by because they're close to residential and it's just too crowded. So you don't want to impact your businesses. And I think that we should allow the staff, the discretion, project by project, to figure that out. I don't think we have to be so hard-nosed that we say, no, you can only have half the parking that you need. You start out at one per unit and then you go backwards based on whatever justification they can submit to the planning department and the planners decide if it's reasonable or not. And then you live with the consequences. You know, if you make a mistake and you learn, and then the next time you do, it may be different.
So quick question, just to ease concerns about parking, because I heard part of your concern earlier is staff, like a different staff potentially requiring a developer to go over the minimum? Is there any way we could add language to the minimum that? I have no idea, I'm looking at the director here, like, a site shall not be required to provide more than the minimum required parking spaces? Even though I kind of read it?
I think that's what Commissioner Kuriozzi is asking for.
Yeah.
Maybe this will help a little bit. So when there's a non-discretionary permit that's being considered and relative to setbacks, the planning staff doesn't say, no, your 20-foot setback isn't enough, we think you need 24 feet. The 20 feet is what the law says. When there's a maximum parking requirement, I've never seen, any place I've worked, somebody saying, oh, that's not enough parking when they meet the minimum ordinance standard. You know, really a minimum at that point is something that sets the stage for an applicant. Once they get above that line, anything above that's their choice. And so it's not there for staff to exercise discretion on. It's really no less than this. And anything above that, that's your choice as the applicant developer. And that's how I've always understood regulations, that's how I've always applied regulations. And so I hope that helps.
Would that ease your concern, Commissioner?
No. But, you know, I have to find if I'm outnumbered here, that's part of the process. I think there's plenty of examples even here in the county where, and in cities, where the minimums were implemented and there's clearly too much parking. Bay Shore, I know Bay Shore Mall is not an example of what we're talking about here, but that is an example of, there's a lot of parking. So I think that's the potential risk of minimums. And I'm encouraged that there are multiple processes here for developers to advocate for less. I am concerned still about developers advocating for more.
Sorry, Director.
Yeah, thank you. I just want to say Commissioner Kuriozzi is not wrong in that last statement. There are plenty of parking requirements that really are excessive. And there's plenty of commercial parking requirements that are based upon having only 80% of the parking spaces taken on December 22nd. You know, that's just clearly excessive. In my experience, Humboldt County's is not that way. We do not require as much parking to begin with as other jurisdictions do. So there is a different discussion to be had relative to VMT and how much parking we should be requiring. It gets hard when you're trying to do it case by case in every ordinance that we're putting through.
I don't know if this will help ease your concern, but hypothetically, if the county was to tell someone, you know, we believe you should actually have more parking, right? And require one person to put in eight extra spots, but then they don't consistently do that to every applicant, would that person who was required to go above the minimum have some sort of grounds for a legal recourse? Because then my thought would be that the county's aversion to lawsuits would prevent planners from taking that arbitrary discretion. Or am I totally off here? I noticed legal's not here tonight.
Legal is here. In fact, I have failed again because Joel Campbell Blair is here and he's on Zoom, and so he is watching. If you want a legal opinion on that, you can get one. But, uh, I, I think the thing to understand is, is that, you know, we, we're very hard not to be arbitrary, and not to put ourselves in a place where we're committing what's called a taking, which is taking away property rights by requiring something more of, uh, one person than we're requiring of somebody else.
Just, I'll just respond, yeah, I mean, that does make sense in terms of the staff's likelihood. I think my concern still stands for developers.
Clarifying question, um, through the chair to staff, 'cause I hear a concern of permeable or non-permeable toppings on, um, real estate. Is there anything in our ordinance that disallows someone from putting asphalt on their whole partial? In commercial or industrial, any of these zonings here?
Not aware of anything that would absolutely restrict that, there.
So, if we were to create a maximum parking spa, a maximum parking requirement, we could be taking someone's potential rights of their land away?
Well, that's a little squishy.
It is, but I'm, I'm, I'm just trying to...
Because I, I think there's, you know, within zoning, there's a, there's an idea that the reason that this is being done is for private benefit, but also public benefit. And, and so, you know, those two lines cross someplace, and there is a public interest in not completely paving everything, there is a public interest in having landscaping, there is an interest in, in not overdeveloping things. So I think that that doesn't put the county in a, a bad place, it puts the county in a place where it's trying to protect the public interest.
Trying to do good planning, sound planning.
So, I guess we, I'll go back to the parking thing, are we... 'Cause I wanna get to the density part, so I, I, I hear strong here, I think I'm opposite 2 here, that, that's what I'm saying, we're at 3-3, so what, what do we wanna do with the parking thing? Commissioner Curriozzi?
Could, uh, do a straw poll on the maximum idea?
Okay. Straw poll, um, on maximum requirement for parking.
I, I don't think you should, if, if I wanna have apartments that everybody has two parking spots and I'm, you know, can charge a little more because, you know, it's more enhanced, people are gonna wanna rent there, that should be on me. I, I'm more worried about the minimum that you were gonna require. If they wanna put in five per apartment, that's up to them, it's their property. So I don't think we should regulate how many, you know, more than the minimum. It's the minimum that, that I'm concerned about. If you start saying, oh, we're only gonna have one for every other unit, um, then that starts to become a problem, because a lot of people have two cars, and now if you've already cut it back 50%, you know, whoever gets home first gets the parking, and then you create the mess that, um, everyone has to deal with. So I'm more con, I don't care, if they wanna put in 10 spots, that's up to them, it's their property, but it's the minimum that I'm concerned about.
So, just to clarify here, you do not support having a maximum, is that what I, that's what I heard you say?
Yes, that's what I say.
Commissioner West?
I'm in support of a maximum.
Commissioner Levy?
I, I would be in support of the maximum, I also kinda feel like it's not likely to have a big effect on this, given everything else that's written, and I don't wanna get hung up on not resolving this, uh, so what am I saying with that? I mean, I, I guess, I, I don't get the sense that there is consensus for the, for the commission to, to add a maximum, and I'm not feeling personally a need to die on that fight or whatever, so, so I'll, I'll, I'll say no, I don't need a maximum.
Okay, I don't support a maximum. Commissioner?
I don't support a maximum.
Commissioner Curriozzi?
And I do.
Okay, so, 4-2, so we'll leave the maximum out, um, so then can we get to the alternatives where I believe there is density?
Absolutely, we can, so just to make sure that we're clear on what just happened, is we're leaving the language like it has been proposed.
Correct. Commissioner Curriozzi?
I wanna express my appreciation for the discussion, I know that was tedious, but I appreciate it.
I appreciate Commissioner Curriozzi proposing a modest, um, further disincentivization of, of parking, and, yeah, yeah, thank you.
So, at the two alternatives, um...
Make this a little bit easy, if you like alternative 1, you like alternative 2. So, kind of the, it's either 20 units, uh, per acre, or it's 30 units per acre, and then the, uh, the alternative 2 really has to do with the density bonus provision, at what point does that start? And this was something that we went around about with respect to the tiny home village and commercial zones, um, and tied it into the maximum density allowed within the, um, medium-density residential, uh, land use designation, and so this ties into that. And so, this, the 30 units would be consistent with the tiny home village, and then if somebody wanted to go above that, they could, uh, with the density bonus, and the density bonus provisions are laid out elsewhere in the code, and there's an update that's come through in state law.
Okay, so I'm gonna attempt a different approach at this one, that just goes straw poll right off the bat for who supports alternative 1, start with Commissioner Curriozzi?
Can I change that process and ask a question to staff?
Go ahead.
Thank you, sorry. Uh, I, I'm just curious, um, if, I, I think the 30 units, um, was pulled from what is approved in the zone, and that is what the general plan EIR is based off of, is that correct?
Not in commercial zones. In commercial zones, there really isn't a residential density. And so, it is based upon the RM, uh, land use designation, medium-density residential, which goes up to 30 units. We were trying to stay within the realm of what the general plan EIR evaluated in terms of overall development intensity.
Yeah, so I guess that gets my question, I was, um, I was curious if a higher density could be entertained while still within, staying within the general plan EIR?
I think you could make an argument that that's feasible, given the fact that the height limit in, um, at least a C2 zone is 75 feet, which could be as much as six stories. That could be far mo, far higher than 30 units per acre, and in housing, um, incent, incentive zones, um, those are allowed by, I think by right. In housing opportunity zones, yeah. So, so I, I think you could probably go higher and not violate the, uh, the work done in the EIR.
Well, we have to be able to, if there's a density bonus that allows higher.
Correct, and, and part of the rationale here is to have something in place that really incentivizes a higher density, um, providing that with the ability to provide affordable housing. And, and so kinda tying those together, that was part of the connective tissue that we were recommending.
So are you saying then you could have more than 30 units?
Yes.
You could, and I think that, you know, there's a break-even point, where if you start to say, oh, you can only do this, you know, minimal amount, then it becomes not very cost-efficient to build the unit, so there needs to be that flexibility. 30's, you know, a starting point, but it could be 36, it could be 48, depending on the site, and like you said, how many stories, because if you want it to be affordable, you need more units typically to break even. So, I would encourage more units, you, they could be studios, it could be one-bedroom, very small units, and you may wanna exceed 30 units. If you have 18 or 20, you're not gonna even be able to pay the bills. Taxes, insurance, and all that's expensive.
Okay. Commissioner Curriozzi?
I would entertain higher, but I honestly don't have a density number in mind, um, but I just wanted to allow.
Go ahead.
So, so just when you say you could entertain higher, I'm on the same page, but does the density bonus not achieve that for you? Because there's, there's no cap, as I'm reading it, on the density bonus, so it's already written that way, right?
But requires affordability, right, so we're...
Oh.
It's, yeah, I, I, I understand personally the reasoning for using things that we want, but restricting something we want to get something we want, it's kind of interesting, still bothers me a little bit, but that's what we're doing.
So to clarify, you would support increasing the density, uh, separate from using the density bonus, which requires affordability? Okay.
So, clarifying question, um, to, to staff, the way I read the density bonus, and maybe I'm reading it incorrectly, you can get the 30 units per acre, and then to go above the 30 units per acre, those units have to be affordable, but the other 30 can be regular, is that correct or incorrect?
Yeah, there's, there's all, kind of a graduated scale of how many additional units you can do in relationship to providing certain amenities, yeah.
Okay, so, then backtrack a few ordinances ago, that there is a, a goal to meet affordable housing by the county. So, I'm, I'm, guess I'm just kinda, this is kind of a question to the commission, I'm kind of a little lost, if we're trying to get affordable housing and wanna see above 30 units per acre, how alternative 2 doesn't meet that?
Because really, can I just ask the repeat, what, or the director to repeat again, that the first 30 units do not have to be affordable? It's the affordability requirements are imposed on the, above.
To, to go above that, that is correct.
Okay, thank you.
Does the ADU apply to these units?
No. Well, i- if I may, it's sort of responding to your question, and also just weighing in on this, I mean, I, first of all, I appreciate the, the changes you made in this ordinance, which do align with the tiny house village, and I think, just make it better. I mean, I, I feel better about the density limit being raised while still allowing it to be raised further still, if affordability provisions are met, but I, I think Commissioner Curriozzi, like, made a really good point. We kinda wanna encourage both density and affordability, you know, and, and I'm just wondering if there isn't some way to do, to do both, to encourage both, rather than sort of only encouraging density beyond this level if affordability provisions are met. I, I, I wouldn't wanna remove the density bonus mechanism altogether, so I guess I'm just wondering if there's, if there's any room for further tweaking it so that we could still encourage affordability strongly, but perhaps encourage even more density than what this does, at least in certain zonings. You know, as you've noted, it's, it's different depending on what the height restrictions are, but C2 zoning could go pretty high, so that feels like we're putting a, a cap, at least in that instance, that might be lower than what we would want the density to be. Or not a cap, I should say, but capping it at 30 unless other provisions are met, you know?
30's pretty dense.
Okay.
To your basic question is what else is available, the county does not have, uh, an affordable housing inclusive program, uh, to re, normally what happens when development comes in in other communities, a certain percentage of that just has to be affordable right out of the gate. And the, the county of Humboldt does not have such a requirement. The one tool that we have to kinda legislate, there's two tools that we have to legislate affordable housing. One is density bonus, two is that if we're, uh, providing grant money and requiring somebody to enter into an affordable housing, uh, agreement with us, um, then we can legislate that, uh, the units have to maintain, be maintained at an affordable lo, level. We don't have those tools. Outside of that.
Okay, that's important to take into consideration.
So can I make, no, the clarifying question there, Director, um, what I just heard you say is if we were going to entertain increasing the density without having some sort of affordability provision, we would be potentially taking away the small resources or tools that the county has to meet their affordability requirements for the state?
That has been an argument that we've been making, yes.
Okay.
The other side of that argument is that, is that there is such a thing as affordable, affordable by design, which means that you increase the density to a point where it reduces the overall cost per unit because the, the density's so high. This may be neither here nor there for you, but when it comes to meeting our RENA obligations, those don't qualify because they're not, um, uh, they don't have an agreement on them regulating rent. So they're, they don't qualify as low income or very low income.
Thank, thank you for clarifying that last acronym part, that's what I forgot to add in my question, because that's what I, part of your goals, um, so, I, hearing that, I'm, I'm a little uncomfortable, but, uh, to move that density up and take away the incentive or the county's little bit of ability they have to meet those numbers, but, um...
So from 30 to back down to 20, are you saying?
No, 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 I, 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 I like what we have here. I was, I, I think we've had a really good discussion, I'm going to attempt to go back to the straw polling, okay? So I'm gonna start with alternative 1, Commissioner Curriozzi?
Yes.
Commissioner?
I support it.
I support it?
Yes, sir.
Yes.
Commissioner O'Neill?
Yes.
Okay, so, could, alternative 1 is in, so now we're gonna straw poll on alternative 2, start with Commissioner O'Neill? That's the one where to go above 30 dwelling units per acre, um, if the affordability provisions are met, eligibility, eligibility...
I support that.
Okay, Commissioner West?
Yes.
Commissioner Levy?
Yes.
I support it, Commissioner? Commissioner?
Yes.
Okay, so, we've accepted, um, alternative 1, alternative 2, set the parking, um, so I believe now what we need is a motion and a second to adopt this part, is that correct?
If there are no other discussion points on this ordinance, yes.
I, I believe those are the three big talking points amongst the commission and all public comments, so. Mr. Levy, are you making a motion to accept?
I, I would just, I was about to, and then I just actually wanted to go back and just make sure there was nothing else jumping out that I wanted to comment on.
Okay. And the motion would be to approve the inland and the coastal, from my interpretation?
Sure, I, i- if nobody else has any other points you wanna discuss, then I do move that we recommend approval of the commercial residential inland and coastal ordinances as recommended by staff.
With the approved alternatives?
With the alternatives that we've approved and straw, straw those, yes.
Okay.
I'll second.
Commissioner Curriozzi, seconds, any discussion?
Yes.
Go ahead.
I just want to note, uh, again, I appreciate the parking discussion, um, I think that this will continue to be a topic, I would be interested in, um, just, uh, the possibility of considering some sort of, uh, reform to parking requirements down the road, I think this will continue to be, um, a challenge particularly with climate action plan and, VMT reduction goals, and the regional transportation plan, VMT reduction goals, and, uh, I think it would be timely.
I think that we need to look at real examples of is it working on the ground? Where you can go, like I said, I went back to a project that I worked on, and it was a walking community type funding that we received, so it already started out with reduced parking, and then it's a mess, you know? So I would like to see this work, and I think it really, you have to take into consideration, is there bus available? Is there safe walking and biking in that community? Because in a lot of places there are not. And is there adequate disabled parking? I think that's really critical because disabled people can't walk necessarily, they have to have someone come pick them up and, and drop them off, you know? And everyone gets deliveries, and it just becomes this just night, like a nightmare of congestion and, you know, and then you throw trash cans in there, and it's not, it's not, it sounds really good, a walkable community, but it becomes a nightmare. So if, if it's working somewhere, and we can point that out and go look at it, I think that that's a good idea. Some people may be able to get it right, and some people may not.
I just would echo what Commissioner Kuriazzi said. I would, I would welcome looking for ways or looking for opportunities to have another discussion about parking.
Okay. Any other discussion? Voice vote, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone oppose? Anyone abstain? Motion carries with one absent. Question to staff. It, I could be reading this wrong, it looks like just some language cleanup for the last part. Is that something that presented? I'm just trying to figure out, do we take a small break now, or is that something that we could walk through in like fifteen to twenty minutes?
I, I think, I think you should take a break.
Okay. Ten minute break. So now we turn it back over to staff, and this will be the same thing where they're presenting and then ask questions, and then we give another bite at the apple for public comment, correct? Okay.
That is correct.
Moving on to the zoning updates ordinance, there's the inland and coastal version of this ordinance, and there will be some changes between the inland and the coastal versions. First, we are amending the definition of structure to exclude fences up to seven feet in height. It was originally six feet in height. This is to be consistent with state building code, which now allows fences up to seven feet in height without a building permit. We're amending the definition of structure so that way a variance would not be required for a fence up to seven feet in a property setback. We are also proposing that fences in residential zones, specifically low-density residential zones, shall have a maximum of three feet in height for any portion of the fence located within the front yard setback. This is to increase visibility, improve safety, and culminate a more neighborhood feel of lower-density residential areas. The general plan Housing Element Implementation Measure sixty-three calls for amending the zoning regulations to remove the definition of family and references thereto where family is defined by statute. We looked into this a little bit further to determine what the intention of the implementation measure was, and it was to be consistent with a Supreme, California Supreme Court case where it is, they determined there should not be any numerical references, also known as the rule of five, was, it was unconstitutional violation rights of privacy. We are proposing to remove any references to a numerical limit in our definitions of family, which would still achieve the intention of the implementation measure. Moving on to mini storage, we are proposing to define mini storage. This is currently not defined in our zoning code. It is currently, or it's previously been permitted under storage warehouses use or the warehousing, storage, and distribution use type. Currently, mini storage has been principally permitted as storage warehouses in the following zones and required a use permit in the following zones of neighborhood, commercial, and community general, and inland, and coastal. The definition we are proposing is mini storage shall be one or more buildings used for the storage of good and materials within self-contained compartments by various users also referred to as self-storage. We are also proposing to remove storage warehouses as allowed use from neighborhood commercial and community commercial, since we have previously principally permitted mini storage under that use. We are proposing that conditional use permits would be required for the following zones for mini storage. Moving on to housing opportunity zones, we are proposing that the inland business park zone shall principally permit residential uses subordinate to the principal, or permitted use if it is within a housing opportunity zone. Currently, all the commercial zone, inland's zonings allow this. We are just proposing to make it consistent with the commercial zonings and just find another way to make housing easier in other zones, but it would still require a special permit if it is outside a housing opportunity zone, so it's just a way of promoting infill. Finally, we are proposing to remove containing four or fewer units per building as part of the dwelling groups and multiple dwellings in the inland residential multiple-family R3 zoning. This is just to allow flexibility in building types for housing. I am open to questions, or I could pull up the ordinances if you'd prefer to go through those.
Commissioner O'Neill? So on the, the fencing, the three feet in the front yard, does that, would that preclude you from having one of those metal decorative fences like some people do for security in their, in front of their house?
As long as it's less than three feet high.
You could have it.
So I wouldn't support that, because I think in some communities it might be a security issue, and it, some people might have a dog that can get over a three-foot fence. I can understand not wanting to have like a wooden fence that totally, you know, you can't see over, but if you're doing those decorative security fences in your front yard, I, I think you should be able to do that.
Commissioner West?
Um, once we get through questions, I have, and we hear from the public, I, I have some ideas on how we might address that. But I did have a question for staff, in terms of why three feet was chosen and not necessarily four feet?
Typically, three feet's used historically because that's the height of somebody who's sitting in a car, and that's their line of sight. Obviously, if you're in a higher vehicle, it's not as restricted, but that's the traditional rationale for three feet in a front yard.
That makes sense. Thank you.
That's all it says, within the front yard setback, so like the five feet or whatever happens to be. Is that five feet inclusive of the sidewalk, or is it strictly the street?
Generally, the front yard setback is twenty feet in residential zones, and it does not include the sidewalk, so it's from the edge, the back of the sidewalk, so, okay.
So just to clarify, the way I heard the, the three feet requirement, if you're with, if you're outside of the front yard setback, so twenty, if, you could have a seven-foot tall fence if you're twenty feet off your property land, correct?
Yes.
Okay. It's just, it's, there's this fencing, three-foot-high fence would just only imply if you're within those building setback requirement areas?
Of the front.
Of the front. Okay. Commissioner Kuriazzi?
Actually, I do have a question. So on the, this refers to language that's in, on the inland resolution, it's finding three evidence A, talking about the, changing the definition of family. It states, remove, that the intention of, of implementation measure sixty-three is to remove the definition of family and references thereto except where family is defined by statute, and I was curious what by statute meant.
Typically, statute refers to language that's coming down from the state. One of the things that we struggled with here in whether or not to remove the definition of family is that family, the word, is used over and over again within the ordinance. So if you completely take it out, you take the definition out, you're leaving a really important word without a definition.
So referring to both of those, both language flow down from the state as well as the fact that it is a word that's heavily used into current code?
Two different points there. One, the statute is flowing down from state, then we looked at just eliminating it, but recognized, wow, if we eliminate that, there's so many references to family that we're, we're really leaving ourselves undefined in many cases.
Commissioner West?
I have another question about fences, and I apologize, I didn't go and look at all of the fence code that currently exists, but I'm curious where the county sits on chain link fences in low-density residential areas.
In my review, we do not define what fences are allowed versus not allowed. If it's a fence, it's a fence. A retaining wall is its own thing. However, we don't specify materials, whether it's chain link, wooden, open fence, things of that nature.
Thank you.
Any more questions? So would you recommend we go into the ordinances now?
Yes.
Okay.
So with fences, we are proposing to also amend the current section of the code where any building or architectural feature of a building may be erected at a height greater. If a special permit is obtained, we are also adding fence into that section of code. So that way, if someone would like to have a fence that exceeds seven feet, they still have the option to, and building or architectural feature do not encompass, encompass fence.
So the, I threw you a curve, I'm sorry. The, the important thing there is that normally to do those things, it requires variance, and variance require three findings to be made. Special permit is a lower bar.
That section of code would also allow someone to exceed the proposed three feet in the front yard setback. We would also be adding a section of code stating that a maximum of three feet shall be within the, any portion of fence located in the front yard setback in the following Moving on to definitions, we would be removing any references to numerical in the definition of family, adding the definition of mini storage, and amending the definition of structure to exclude fences seven feet in height or less. For use types, we would be adding mini storage. This following section in, in blue is, it was not included in your packet. We are including this to remove the reference to storage warehouses. To be consistent with mini storage, we noticed this after submitting the packet that we've principally permitted mini storage under storage warehouses. My apologies for C1 zoning, a use permit. For C2, we did the same thing, removing and storage warehouses from the principally permitted uses due to principally permitting mini storage previously under that use. For industrial commercial, we would be adding mini storage as a use type for, with a use For business park, we would be allowing residential uses subordinate to permitted uses within a housing opportunity zone to be principally permitted, but residential uses subordinate to permitted uses outside a housing opportunity zone would still require a special permit in the business park zoning. We were also just moving from as well as transitional housing and emergency shelters, moving those to be their own use type instead of, as part of that previous defined use. Mini storage would need a use permit within the business park zoning as well as limited industrial. And then for residential multiple, multiple-family, we would be removing containing four or fewer units per building for dwelling groups and multiple dwellings. And that concludes the draft inland.
Commissioner Levy?
I just have a clarifying question, and I just apologize that I wasn't able to totally ascertain this myself, but I just wanted to understand what is actually being proposed here with regard to mini storage? Is it, other than defining it or renaming what has been previously referred to as other terms that mean the same thing? But specifically, I just want to understand what this ordinance or these, these ordinance changes would do to where, in which zones, mini storage is principally permitted or conditionally permitted or not permitted? Is that a quick answer that you can provide?
Yes. So the intent for changing this was to remove allowances for mini storage in the C1 and C2 zones entirely.
Even with a use permit?
I believe that's correct.
Yeah. In C1 and C2.
Do you have the list? And the intent here is that we are looking at, we're looking at parcels that have water, sewer, you know, electricity available to them in general in these zones, and we would like uses to be things that need those, those services. And as we're changing our, the ordinance that you just recommended approval of to allow more residential, you know, we want to look at what is the best use in these zones. And so mini storage, we're allow, we're not allowing them in the C1 or C2, and they would be conditional use permit in C3, business park, and limited industrial, which are more just uses that make more sense to have mini storage in them. And then in coastal, it would be... And then in coastal, it would be, are those conditional, conditionally permitted in the commercial general, the business park, and the light industrial. And that was by design to not use our best properties that have these services for a use that doesn't need them.
Great, thank you.
Commissioner Kiriazi.
One additional clarifying question, was storage warehouse defined at all or it was simply used as a, as an identified use?
Storage warehouse was defined as, is that what it was? That was? Oh, I guess it wasn't defined, it was just defined as part of the warehousing, storage, and distribution use type? So it was a little confusing because we really didn't have anything that was specific to mini storage.
Thank you.
Any other clarifying questions before I open to public comment, which I don't think we have any participants, but I just want to make sure.
Quick question, we were talking about regulating the fence height of front yards, but we don't regulate hedge or vegetation height, do we? Okay.
Was that a no?
That's a no.
Okay, thanks.
Okay, so.
Would the vegetation height be regulated in the site triangle on corners?
Yes.
Okay, so to give public the opportunity, I'm going to open up public comment. We have zero people in attendance in person, but we did allow. And if I'm seeing this correctly, we have zero attendees. So this Thursday night, we've basically got everyone to tune out by eight. So I'm going to close public comment, but just, I wanted to make sure that we opened that opportunity because it'd be really not fun to have to come and do this again. So now we can go discussion. Commissioner West.
I think, starting with fences, I think I started to hear Commissioner O'Neill have an interest in allowing, like, higher fencing. And Eureka has.
In the front.
Yes, so specifically talking about 102.1.4. At which I, I agree with the idea that when you're on the street, it is beneficial to the public, the community, to be able to see into the front yard. It really helps with community fabric. And when you drive around and you see people who have really high fences that are fully solid, it feels like they have a fortress and it changes the community character. With that being said, I think a way, but, but also it's important, I think, for people to feel safe in their homes. And sometimes tall fences are the only way for people to feel safe. A way that Eureka has addressed this is to require solid fences to be, there's a four feet, but three feet is amenable to me. And then defining an open fence and allowing that to be six feet or seven feet, I think in this case, is what we're talking about. And the way that an open fence is defined is, they define materials, but must be at 70% open to the passage of light and air. And so I would advocate that we consider an open fence provision specifically for the front yard to allow people to build tall fences and feel secure, but also still be attentive to neighborhood character and other considerations with vision. I would also advocate that we disallow chain link in this scenario.
And I agree. Because they have some ni, some of the nicest houses in Eureka have those wrought iron open and they're tall with gates and they're very attractive, but they're there for a reason. If you live in an area where you want security, I don't think we should say, no, you can't have it.
Commissioner West, can I clarify, disallowing chain link period or for anything higher than three feet?
In the front.
You don't usually see chain link that is three feet high. It's often, it's often higher than that. So I would be, given that it's an unusual occurrence, I would be open to disallowing it only if it's over three feet, but I think I could go either way on that one, frankly.
There's multiple houses in McKinleyville with three feet chain link. So maybe it's just more common in McKinleyville, but I haven't ever noticed it.
So even decorative colored chain link, you know?
Specifically in the front yard, yes, would be, would, would is what I'm advocating for. You can do whatever you want on the side yards and be practical, but.
I, I agree that it's not the most attractive fencing, but there are some homes that I walk past that have it for securing their dogs. And so I'd be concerned a more open fence wouldn't achieve that same goal. And I, so I appreciate that they installed it and maybe that was what they could afford. I don't know, I'm, I'm thinking out loud here. It is a three foot or four foot, something like that.
Go ahead.
I think, thinking about options, I mean, that chain link is the affordable option when you think about open fences, so that is a downside to it. But I think when, when thinking about seven, 70%, at least 70% open as a fence, because you could, you could do an open fence as it is, three feet, and as the ordinance is written, you could do any type of three foot fence you wanted. But Eureka goes so far as to define materials, and I think it's helpful just when you're thinking about the kind of open fences that you see.
What do they say about materials?
Utilize decorative, masonry, ornamental steel, or wrought iron, aluminum, brick, stone, or wood. And then it disallows chain link or other woven wire fence materials smaller than six gauge.
Clarifying question, with these amendments, what about existing fences?
Legal non-conforming if they don't comply.
Okay. I just was making sure, because I, I think I technically have a fence that might be four feet in the front. I'd have to look, so I'm like, wait, am I, am I setting? So, thank you for that clarification.
I, I have a question about legal non-conformance. So property owners are granted the right for maintenance, so in theory, they could just continually maintain it so it never fall, okay, so, okay.
Sorry, I had to ask a personal question for a second there. So back to fences, so it sounds like we're on the front yard consensus that everyone likes three feet, or would people like to have four feet, is what?
I would like it to be consistent with all fences up to seven feet, but open on the front is fine with me. I have an open fence, mine's made out of two by two cedar, and, you know, I don't, people can see in my yard if they want, but for some people, it's security that they're looking for. And there's a lot, all you see is people stealing out of people's, you know, yards. And if they feel like they need that, as long as it's open and tasteful, then I think they should be able to have it as high as the rest of the fence.
Okay, so I'm hearing a request for three feet from two commissioners, but to go above three feet, it would be 70% open. And I just need some, I'm just trying to get us to land somewhere.
That is what I am proposing, yes.
Okay.
And I could go either way on, if the commission is not amenable to the chain link portion of it, that is something I am amenable to dropping.
So could we do a straw poll without the chain link requirement, or, or you want to do a straw poll with the chain link disallowance first?
It's at your pleasure.
I'm going to attempt with, with allowing chain link. Commissioner, Commissioner O'Neill?
Yeah, I support that. The cost of fence is so high now that we're not going to have a huge problem with everyone building, you know, all these fences. So I, I agree that we should be able to go as high as the side fences if we want the front being open and the material doesn't matter to me.
Once, okay, I think I might disallow the comment before asking for a straw poll.
Just clarity on what we're taking a straw poll on.
To add the ability to go up to seven feet in the front yard setback if it's 70% see-through, pass-through of air and light?
She has some language that I could learn.
The language that comes out of the Eureka code.
Yeah, to, to restate it, be at least 70% open to the passage of light and air.
So it's allowed to be solid if it's three feet or lower?
Yes.
Okay. And we are including chain link, disallowing chain link in all cases?
No.
No, including chain link, that would be the.
Oh, I see, so chain, we're not including language around chain link?
Not on our first pass.
Got it, okay.
So, yes, yes. Commissioner Levy?
On raising the allowance for open fence to seven feet in the.
Any fence above three feet high must be open with 70% pass-through in that front yard setback area?
But a no would mean I prefer the language that's proposed in.
You would prefer, a no would mean you would prefer the three foot limit?
Which is what's proposed in.
For solid, so solid up to three feet. If you vote no, then you're saying you're only allowing up to three foot fences. If you vote yes, you're allowing up to a three foot solid fence or up to a seven foot fence that's, has 70% pass-through.
Which could be chain link.
Yes.
I'm going to say no.
Can I ask a clarif, was your no because of the chain link? Would it have been a yes if the chain link was left out?
It would.
That was my next. Thank you.
I thought we were going to go back and do the chain link as a.
I know, but I'm just, I just, I would almost prefer, yeah.
That was my bad, so I'm going to go, I'm going to go yes.
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 Okay, so.
Okay.
So, but Chair, I, I don't think you've answered the question of whether or not the commission would support no chain link.
Okay, you're correct.
That's the next part.
So the exact language is Eureka, which would be disallowing chain link. Start with Commissioner O'Neill.
I would disallow chain link on the front, yeah.
Okay.
Yes, I would disallow chain link.
Yes, I would support that if chain link is disallowed.
I would not support discriminating someone's ability to put in cheap economical fencing.
Kind of a wash at this point, so I, I'm sure I'll support it.
Similarly, I think with Commissioner. So I, I, I will do a yes as well, but recognizing that's a little bit of a conflict.
Coin flip, you have language there that already works, so just go ahead and go with that. And hopefully somebody doesn't say we discriminate against them one day.
So the consensus is to modify that section to include the language from the Eureka code for the 70% pass-through of light and air.
Correct.
And excluding chain link.
Correct, because it was the same vote.
And probably excluding hogwire.
I didn't hear what you said.
Sorry.
The director was asking if that vote also included exclusion of hogwire.
And chain link is not cheap, by the way. It's not cheap fencing anymore. All fencing is pretty expensive.
So it says chain link and other woven wire fence materials smaller than six gauge. So if you can find top, if you can find wire that's above six gauge.
Point of clarification, we're not adopting the language from the Eureka code that specifies materials with the exception of chain link. Right, we're not specifying masonry and stone and all those other things, right?
No. Go ahead, Commissioner West.
And also just a further clarification, Eureka has different height requirements, and I was not bringing the height requirements into it. I was proposing to keep what staff has proposed.
Thank you. Do we have any more sticking points or talk, I shouldn't say sticking points, talking points through the different definitions or ordinances? Or is everyone good with the proposed language?
We're done with fences, right?
We're done with fences, and that's why, I, I feel we're done with fences and now we're moving on that, what would be other talking points or concerns that Commissioners had?
I do, moving to the family definition. To staff, in the family definition, it says, it references a dwelling unit. So persons living together as a single nonprofit housekeeping unit in a dwelling unit. And I noticed that a dwelling unit does not include emergency housing. And I wanted to, I wanted to ask if that was of concern. I don't know, is it of concern that the definition of family does not include emergency housing?
I don't think we thought that that was a concern, primarily because what we've allowed with emergency housing really isn't permanent dwellings, but temporary dwellings. And, and so what we're really trying to do here is define what a normal dwelling unit would be for regulatory purposes and, and then make the definition of family consistent, not even with state law, it's really consistent with a court action.
Can I ask a question? So if someone down the street from me wanted to, to open up a reentry house and they were going to bring people in there that were coming out of rehab and they were all living together and there's 10 of them, is that a family?
Yes, and that would be transitional housing.
Commissioner Levy?
Thanks, well, I just, I just wanted to bring up mini storage again. I appreciate what staff's proposing here. I absolutely agree with what staff said about wanting to discourage or disallow that as a use where other, in certain circumstances and where, where other uses might better achieve land use goals, housing goals, and others. So I guess what I'm wondering is, in addition to what you have proposed changing, which is to remove altogether a couple of zones from being able to do mini storage, are there any other edge cases of where the zoning might make sense to disallow it altogether? I mean, I want to say I'm, I'm not opposed, of course, to like eliminating all mini storage, but I just think we have too much of it in general in places that could either support housing or just would support better types of commercial development. And sometimes it seems like it's a cheap and easy thing for a landowner to do. So certainly, there are certain zones where I think it's quite appropriate. Are there any others we should, we might consider further limiting it in?
Maybe we could share the slide and you can look at the ones that it is proposed to be allowed in.
Right.
So as you can see by the slide, the intent here is to allow it with a conditional use permit inland in the C3, the business park, and the limited industrial. And then in the coastal zone with, again, a conditional use permit, so there isn't anywhere that they'd be allowed just by right in the CG, the MB, and the ML. So if, if there are any, any of those zones seem that it wouldn't be appropriate?
I, I just wanted to make sure that there weren't any others not mentioned there. I, I will say for those, for, for my part, those three as listed, or the, the ones that are listed in inland, seem pretty appropriate to allow it, at least with a use permit. So I, I wouldn't propose disallowing it there.
I think to, to your question, I did notice that warehousing, storage, and distribution is not currently allowed in ML, in light industrial. I had kind of waffled back and forth bringing that up. I think I could go either way, but I thought they are somewhat similar, definitely not the same, but there's similar uses. And I, I guess I don't totally understand the reasoning for excluding warehousing, storage, and distribution from light industrial, but I thought it's worth noting. but I thought it's worth noting.
I mean, we could add that back in, we, or add that in, we didn't take that out.
Yeah, I think my point being that they're somewhat similar use types, and that we're allowing mini storage in ML, but it's currently not allowed.
So, is there, they're not, I mean, I would think warehousing, some form of warehousing should be allowed in the ML.
It currently isn't in code or in what's in the current packet.
Okay.
If we could share the screen again?
Yes, please.
Did you not, do we not have it?
That, it appears that consistency existed before we started this, so, or the inconsistency then, which is interesting.
We, I mean, certainly the commission can choose to add that in as a allowed use within the ML. I would anticipate we probably have allowed it in the ML, but...
I, I would say, um, I guess a similar opinion as Commissioner Levy. Certainly not opposed to, to mini storage, but agree with regulating it. I think I would probably lean towards, um, removing ML to be consistent with warehousing, storage, and distribution, but I'm open to either.
Removing even the option to do mini storage in ML because we're not allowing other types of warehouse and storage.
Would, would it be better to possibly add in the other warehouse and storage options into ML to potentially open up more economic diversity? I, I would, I guess I would say, I would lean more towards bringing what you, the inconsistency you brought up into ML than disallowing mini storage.
I'd be okay with that.
Straw poll, maybe? Commissioner O'Neil? Commissioner West?
I'm okay with it.
Yep.
Six, zero, good job.
May I ask a point of clarification? Would you like that to be principally permitted or conditionally permitted?
Condition, I mean, what, what we have for mini storage is conditionally permitted, right?
Correct.
So, yeah, I, I think, that's what I meant by I could support adding the other types of warehouse storage as a conditionally permitted use.
Okay, thank you.
That's what I heard, that's what I heard as well, for parity, the same, similar use with the same, um, type of permitting.
Right, I, yeah, I think, I think that would be my preference. I think the other two, it looks like warehouse, storage, and distribution are principally permitted. I would lean towards having it conditional. I guess, I, I'm not, I don't know if we necessarily have enough information, or I have enough information to make that. But, um, I guess I'm sitting more on recognizing there's an inconsistency. I think I'm in favor of how staff has proposed mini storage. And I would be comfortable with leaving it to staff to resolve that inconsistency.
I, I am staggered that warehousing's not allowed in the ML. I'm rereading it because I, I almost can't believe that that's not the case. Normally, that is a use that would be allowed there. There's far more intensive uses that are allowed in the ML than, than warehousing. And, and normally what you're trying to do is create a little bit of separation between incompatible uses. And, and so, I... I'm without words. I understand your concern that, uh, don't wanna be inconsistent allowing a storage kind of use into a zone where the storage use isn't already allowed there, um, and, and that makes some sense. You know, the, the, we, we, we don't, we don't know why that was left out before.
And if I may, we just looked at the coastal version of ML, and warehousing, storage, and distribution is principally permitted there. Yes, so...
And I would advocate that would be normal for warehousing distribution to be a principally permitted use in an ML.
I, I'm okay with that too, but then you're still proposing that mini storage be conditionally permitted in those zones, in the inland and coastal ML?
Yes, that's correct. So, storage, warehousing, and distribution can also be things like, um, packages come in, and then they get distributed and sent out again. It's a little different than mini storage. Mini storage is, well, you know what that is.
Then, then, yeah, if it's kind of an oversight that that's, that storage and distribution is not a principally permitted use in the inland ML, I'm personally okay with it being principally permitted, but still only conditionally permitting mini storage.
Same for me as well. Commissioner Curie-Aziz, give me, everyone's giving a head nod, so every, it seems like that's good with everyone. Okay? Do we have any more talking points throughout things?
Yes. I have, um, let's see, this, this real, this is in the business park, the, the edits to business park, where we're in the table, where we're adding the residential use type language. And then there's a, a little bit of, um, uh, I guess I was, I'll just, I'll just read. I'll read what it says, and I'll, and I'll state what I'm proposing. So, it says, "Within housing opportunity zones, residential uses, uses subordinate to the permitted use, including caretakers' residences and multiple dwellings on the upper floors." Et cetera, I guess. And I'm proposing to change the word "including" to "defined as," caretakers' residence and multiple dwellings. I guess I found it confusing to say "including," or I guess I'm looking to staff maybe if the word "including" is allowing, um, other uses.
I do believe the intent is that it includes that, but there may be other uses that we're not listing. And that is how it's written in the other sections of the code for the different zones.
Okay.
So, we cut and pasted it from C3 as an example.
Okay. Then I guess I, I'm okay, I'm fine with leaving as "including." The other point I had was consistency between the, um, uh, uses per, right below it, you present a language for the uses permitted with a special permit. And, um, in that second one, you omit the word "commercial establishments," you just simply stay, say establishments. Whereas in the previous principally permitted, you say "commercial establishments." Again, I'm wondering if there should be consistency there, if you should remove "commercial," or if they should both say "commercial." I don't, since we're talking about a commercial zone, I don't know if it matters, but...
Yeah, that's just the, how it was written in the other zones, so it, we'd be open to whichever change you'd prefer there, if you'd prefer one.
Since we are talking about something that's a little bit beyond the commercial zone, just, I would recommend taking "commercial" out of the, uh, principally permitted residential use type and making that consistent with the special use.
So, if it's not a commercial establishment, what kind of establishment could it be?
Well, they're a little bit on, more on the industrial side, office side. So, I mean, "commercial" can be fine, but "commercial" is typically more associated with retail. And I, it's just better if there's something that could cause confusion to remove that. Sometimes simplicity is better.
I, I get that, but I was just trying to figure out what, what, what would it be if it was an establishment?
Could be industrial, could be office.
Okay. All right.
There's a civic use type, it says administrative as an example, too.
Okay.
Okay. So, everyone's good with that?
Okay.
More talking points or concerns?
I just, uh, the rest of my points are actually related to the resolution and the findings. I think the rest, uh, the proposed changes I'm good with.
Okay, so everyone's good with the proposed language and chang, changes? We're just gonna go look at the resolution and findings now, is that correct?
Yeah.
Okay.
Thank you. So, uh, um, the, so I have to collect my thoughts here. I think the, um, the first point I wanted to bring up was in the first finding, where we're talking about there's no environmental impact. I've noticed that, uh, there is a reliance on the discretionary process as a justification for no environmental impact. So, an, an example would be, um, in evidence B of the first finding. And I'm in the inland resolution.
Can we share the screen, please?
An, an example would be, uh... So, for example, promoting infill and still requiring a discretionary process outside of housing opportunities is a phrase that's used for justifying that there's no environmental impact. And, um, that is used again, of course, I lost where I've, where I had it before. But my, I guess my overall point being that it seemed to me like discretionary process was used as a justification for, um, creating another barrier to ensure there, that discretionary process is the reason there's no environmental, um, impact, rather than the change itself does not have an environmental impact. I guess, I don't know, hopefully, if staff is following.
Yeah, I, I am. I totally hear what you're saying. It's a lot of what we've talked about while we're moving the mini storage into a discretionary project, much, much of the other changes are not. So, one of the things that I think I would recommend that you allow staff to change this to is to more closely identify what changes in the code would result in actual changes on the ground, and compare that to the environmental work that has already been done as part of the general plan, EIR. That's similar to what we did with the tiny home village. And really focus on the fact that these changes will not result in a change of what's already allowed from an environmental impacts standard. The uses may be slightly different, but the overall intensity, the environmental impact of allowing those uses does not change. And I, I think that, you know, we can go through and, and kind of quantify that for the mini storage. We can quantify that for the, uh, where we're allowing residential. Certainly, the definition of family isn't a change, um, and I think we can just talk more specifically about that. The allowance for a fence really is no change. Fences are already allowed.
Yep, I think that, I agree, and I was thinking also, like, being able to point to the EIR, the, the general plan as well. I think I'd be more comfortable with that.
So, if, um... Yes, we can do that. We advertise this as a, as a, an exemption. So, we're gonna re-advertise this for the board. What we can do, if this would make you feel better, is that we will, rather than using an exemption, we'll use sequel section fifteen, one, six, two, which is reliant upon the general plan, EIR, and will prepare an addendum to describe all of this.
Yep, thank you. You're okay with that?
Okay. Is that a re, is that all your concerns, or do you have another?
I, I do have, uh, one other thought. So, this is in the finding two, this is associated with everything, um, that this, these changes must be in the public interest. And, um, I've noticed that, uh, there's a statement that infill is stated as such, that infill is, promoting infill is in the public interest, and I guess I wasn't clear that that's necessarily always the case. I think we're all in favor of infill, but I imagine there are scenarios where infill may not necessarily be in the public interest. So, I was, again, sort of advocating, would like to advocate for a similar solution as Director Ford. Maybe either pointing to the housing element and/or to the RENA document, or something that doesn't just say infill is in the public interest.
So, yeah, we can make some changes to that. I would, uh, rather than saying that infill, reliant on infill, spend a little bit of time talking about what orderly development is, and focusing on, um, maximizing, um, a broad range of transportation opportunities and, and some things like that to, well, that's not as much with this one, but I hear what you're saying.
Yeah, I think, and I was comfortable just referencing, I think the housing elephant, eh, elephant, elephant in the room. The housing element, I think, makes significant justification for infill, and I felt like it would, I would be more comfortable simply referencing the housing element rather than saying infill is in the public interest. Recognizing I'm getting into the weeds, but I appreciate entertaining this change.
Yes, we will, we will absolutely make that change.
Okay, so, um, that was your motion with those, with those amendments?
Yes, sure, I will move to, uh, uh, make the changes as proposed to, um, well, what is this motion? This, this thing that's before us that's making multiple changes to...
Changing language and code and...
Definitions, et cetera.
Yes.
As staff has proposed with the amendments that have been proposed through the discussion here. Yep, is that clear enough?
I would say so, 'cause then we have the record, we're on videotape for life.
I'll second that.
Okay. Any discussion? Okay, we'll do a voice vote. All in favor, say aye.
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 Any want to oppose? Any abstentions? Six, zero with one absent, um, so that is everything. On that, let me look at the agenda, do you get? You didn't get report from Planner?
Yeah, just, uh, bring up two things real quick. Item number one, I did send you an email with the Regional Climate Action Plan attached. We're gonna have a public meeting on September tenth at...
Six o'clock?
In the evening to, uh, present that to the public, answer questions about it, allow the public to digest it a little bit. And, uh, this is a legitimate, legitimate effort to allow the public to review it, comment on it, understand it. Then we'll take the public comment back... Then we'll take the public comment back, discern what comments need to result in changes to the plan, make those, then that plan, that draft of the plan will become the EIR draft. We are moving ahead to put the notice of preparation on the street within the next two weeks so that we can tighten up the timeframe a little bit and get it done as soon as we possibly can. Happy to answer any questions you might have on that?
Not a question, I think just a appreciation and recognition of the social media push that I've seen around it, trying to get the word out. I hope a news outlet also picks it up, but I just thank you for trying to use all of your channels to advocate for public input.
Thank you. And then just a bit of an FYI for you, next Tuesday, the tiny home village emergency, housing village will be going to the board of supervisors. So.
And then just a point of clarification, this process with the EIR and we're allowed as individuals to participate, but we need to be very, very careful if we were going to engage.
Yeah, so thank you for bringing that up. That, it's interesting meeting with the different jurisdictions. I, I think that different people have different understandings of what can and can't be done. So obviously you can attend, you cannot huddle together as the planning commission and talk about how you're going to vote and what you're going to do. Really don't talk about it at all. But you're fully free to sit and absorb and even ask questions, but, you know, the limitation there is don't express an opinion.
Thank you for that. Commissioner West?
Forgive me if I missed it, and you said it, is that meeting going to be recorded so that if we're not able to attend, we can absorb on our own time?
Yeah, we, we are absolutely working on that. We are working on making it hybrid, and so we will record it.
Okay. Any planning, that was just your two things?
That was the two things I had, yeah.
Any planning commission discussion items?
Just clarifying our next meeting, that it's, we're not meeting on September 5th, is that right?
That is correct. That is a week that, that's, I was getting confused, the Labor Day holiday. And so that week, we just marked off. The board's silent that, that week, and we thought we'd give everybody that week to be away.
So, so yeah, the next meeting will be the third, Thursday in September?
Will be September 19th.
September 19th.
Yeah, so there's no meeting on the 5th. We should be able to get out of here somewhere before midnight on the night, no, I'm joking.
Very funny. So, sorry, Commissioner West.
Sorry to bring this up, but the news article today that came out regarding a conditional use permit in the Glendale area, that came before the planning commission, did it not? Or am I mis?
It did in 2001.
Okay, so a very long time ago.
Yes.
And I just wanted to follow up and ask, because in case the news article didn't capture everything, but there, given that it's already been an approved conditional use permit, at our level, there is not any activity that could be taken or?
So.
To address the concerns?
The, the options right now, and obviously it's very important, we collect all the facts, have a really strong record. And then one of the things that the planning commission, the board did with the, I think with short-term rental, is that we established the ability to suspend the permit for, for violating conditions. And the other option would be revocation. The board is the body that would result in revocation. And so, it's a really difficult situation there, as I'm sure you can imagine. And it's really important that the things that surround that have to do with hours of operation and noise level. And we're actively monitoring them both. And some of the things that are complained about, we can't reproduce or prove.
That's, I think, for me, what I, I was paying attention to the article in terms of like, as some lessons to learn when we consider those kind of projects in the future and what we could potentially look at as tools to help support these kind of issues when they come up in the future.
So this is, you know, way back in the 1800s when the first zoning kind of came out of the fact that they were putting residences right next to places where they were taking cattle and producing beef. That, you know, zoning has been trying to separate incompatible uses ever since, and this is why.
I haven't read the article, so.
I haven't read it yet either, but I've heard about it.
I can only, I'm guessing right now, so.
Yeah, it's a, it's, residences are upset about the industrial use in the Glendale area and the impacts of being next to it, which we've discussed before. But it, yeah, I think if you have time, check it out, it's an interesting, it's, appears to be a pretty well-rounded piece on, on the different concerns and considering these kind of conditional use permits in the future.
And in the articles where, were they published on?
I don't know if I can promote a specific outlet.
Give me a clue.
Wait till we adjourn and then she could sidebar.
Anything else for commissioner comments?
Okay, we'll see you all on the 19th, we are adjourned.